September the 9th, 2015. Could everybody please stand, face a flag, if you can? And could American Legion L. please lead us into its pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
Did we have a roll call?
Commissioner Muse.
Present.
Commissioner Valenzuela.
Present.
Commissioner Woods.
Here.
Vice Chair McSeal.
Here.
Chair Padilla.
Okay, this time is set aside for public communications. For the public to speak on any matters other than what's listed on the agenda. We'll have a three-minute speaking period. Would anybody like to speak up? Seeing that there's nobody, we'll close this session. Let's go to the consent calendar. Is there anybody in the commission that wants to speak out on the consent calendar?
Can I make a motion that we accept the consent calendar?
Do you ready a second?
Second.
Consent calendar. Thank you. Next matter will be action meetings. Would we like to take a vote, all of you in favor?
Aye.
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 On the agenda, we have items that the staff would like to speak on, which would be the Verizon Building, or structural. Could have staffs?
Yes, I have a staff report. Honorable Chair, commissioners, members of the audience, Abraham Teas, representing planning staff. This item is a request for consideration of a design exception and a conditional use permit to construct a 50-foot-tall monopom wireless communications facility within the MU2 mixed-use-two-zone. The location is Assessor's Parcel Number 8543-019-037 and 8543-019-038. The applicant is Los Angeles SMSA Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless, case number CP824. The property is located at 4725 North Main Avenue and is surrounded by commercial and residential uses that are also zoned MU2. The property is owned by the American Legion Abraham Lincoln Post, who operates a not-for-profit veterans' club on the premises. The monopom structure is proposed in the parking lot and will not eliminate existing parking. However, the existing flat pole will need to be relocated and is proposed near the front of the property. And I don't know if you can see the site plan there. We have a... Here's the location of the proposed wireless tower. And then the equipment will be located not too far, closer, attached to the building in a block enclosure underneath an existing overhead cover. The flagpole that's currently located here will be located to the front. The proposed monopom will hold 12 total panel antennas and 12 RRUs. That's this structure here. And that would include three sectors, four antennas per sector. The enclosure will consist of two cabinets and one permanent backup generator. The... Pursuant to Table 153.180.050 of the wireless code, wireless communications facilities are prohibited in the mixed-use zones unless an exception is granted. Since the subject wireless facility is proposed in the mixed-use-two-zone, the applicant is requesting that an exception be granted in addition to the conditional use permit. Table 153.180.050 also limits the height of any antenna structure to a maximum of 30 feet unless an exception is also granted for that. The monopom is proposed to be 50 feet in height at the top of the palm fronds. Now, again, the top of the palm fronds are here, and that would be a 50-foot height. And so, the applicant has demonstrated that the height is required for this location and is therefore requesting an exception to exceed the 30-foot height limit. Now, this image here is... Or depicts a man lift adjacent to the existing flagpole. The man lift is vertically extended to represent the proposed height of the monopom structure. The height represents... Representation was placed on-site a week prior to this hearing as required per code. Staff has reviewed the application and application materials, including the justification statements and the engineering analysis, and has determined that with the added conditions of approval, the proposed wireless facility will not have an adverse impact on the environment or public welfare. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution PC15-12 entitled "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park, Adopting the Findings of Fact and Approving a Design Exception and Conditional Use Permit to Construct a 50-foot-tall Monopom Wireless Communications Facility Within the MU2 Mixed-Use-Two Zone pursuant to Table 153.180.050 and Section 153.180.100 in the City's Municipal Code." The location is Assessor's Parcel Number 8543-019-037 and 8543-019-038 to the applicant, Los Angeles SMSA Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless, and the case number is CP824. This concludes staff's presentation.
Would any commissioners like to discuss any of those items on the agenda?
I have a quick question in regards to the monopom. From the picture you're showing me, according to where the cherry picker was at, that's where it's supposed to be located, correct?
The actual flagpole will be removed and located to the front, and the precise location of the proposed monopom will be where the flagpole is now.
Where the flagpole is. So it would be kind of the back of the building, in a way, right?
This is actually to the side. It would be visible from the street, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is there any way we can possibly get it to be put in the back, though? Because it's like really close to the driveway area.
Towards the back of the property or behind the building?
So like, see how there's the building? That's the side entrance, right?
Right.
So let's say to put it in the back of the building.
The property owner does not own anything behind that. The property line is right at the end of that building.
All right, thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to comment?
I had a quick question. I didn't see anything in the notes showing what kind of protective structure would be in place to protect this monopom.
The actual monopom will not have an enclosure. It would be surrounded by landscaping. It's kind of difficult to see here, but if you can note there, there's parking... Existing parking is there, and then it would be surrounded with curb and the landscape area around it. So there isn't an actual enclosure for that pole.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Woods, would you like to comment?
Yeah, I would just like to say, I just wonder when my fellow veterans are going to get their first check.
I have a question. On this site that's being leased out for the American Legion as soon, they will be getting, like you said, a check. The actually... The area they're leasing actually is only, what, 250 square feet? Is that right?
The enclosure, and I think the applicant may assist me with this, the enclosure itself is, I believe, 150 square feet, and that is just the area underneath the canopy. And then there is additional area, or the lease area, in that, where the pole is. I'm not sure exactly what the area is, the square footage.
Well, you show one, it's 100 square feet, and 150 square feet. The 150 square feet is the enclosure with a brick wall around it.
Yeah.
Seven foot tall. Is that going to be locked in?
Yes, this will be secured.
Secured area?
Yes, this one.
In the monopom, the pole itself, it's going to be a structure on a foundation?
Right, right. If you... If you're familiar with the community center, Barnes Park, there's a pole out there that's not... Doesn't have an enclosure. The equipment is enclosed in a separate location. So that area is visible, and it's surrounded by landscaping, similar to what, you know, what the intent would be here.
Okay, another thing. The entrance will be on Main Street, right?
The entrance to the... The entrance to the property is the same. That will be not changed. That will not be changed at all. The entrance to the enclosure is off of the parking lot.
You show on the plans, they show a driveway five foot or six feet wide coming in?
That's an existing driveway here.
That's an existing driveway, common to everybody?
Right. What the plan shows is improvements on-site that would include parking lot landscaping, and that's one thing that staff has conditioned for the project. And that's to improve and to be able... Because we did add a condition of approval that requires the applicant to plant two palm trees for additional screening to provide that kind of grove look somewhere on the site, and that hasn't been gone... Hasn't gone through plan check yet. It'll be after Planning Commission approval.
You're talking about shrubbery or palm trees?
Palm trees. Two live palm trees, a minimum box size of 36 inches. That's in condition, I believe, Condition E in the resolution.
Is that palm trees we're talking about? 30-foot-tall palm trees, already fully grown, or we're talking about small palm trees?
Well, we typically condition this 36-inch box. That's the sizing.
That's usually about a 25-foot tall palm?
Right, and they would have to be a species similar to what they're proposing as, you know, as a monopom.
Is that the only ones, the only palm trees? Is there... The proprietors are going to pay for that?
The applicant... It'll be up to the applicant to decide who installs that. The project, the property is required, based on parking, to provide at least two trees. And also, as typical, we condition in two trees for screening.
Is there any other questions for the...
Yeah, is this somewhat a standard installation, like all other... Is there anything different about this? Or is this pretty standard?
This is a pretty typical installation.
Is there any other questions? Now I declare the public hearing open to the public. Does anybody have access to speak on this subject? Please state your name.
Oh.[841.82][841.82](laughing). We've been here since 19... I'm going to try to keep it short. We've been here since 1919. Help... I wasn't, but helping veterans and veterans' families, and we want to continue to do that. But it's getting really hard on breakfast and Friday night dinners. This would help us so much to our future. We're in the city of Baldwin Park, and when we... Baldwin Park goes back to parades, we'll be back in them like we always have. That's all I got to say.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak, for or against it? Seeing that there's no other actions, I will close this public hearing. Do I hear a motion to...
I'll motion it.
I'll second it.
And that's through PC15-12.
Okay, that was CP15-12, has been approved?
You need to...
Okay, all those in favor of approval?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion's been approved. Staff, would you please follow up on the next item on the agenda?
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners, Members of the Audience. This report and the attachments before you provide, the proposed changes to Subchapters 153.160 and 153.220 of the City's Municipal Code, as well as the Landscape Design Manual, all relating to water-efficient landscaping. A bit of historical background. Water-efficient landscaping standards were originally required for each city in the state of California, and each county in an incorporated area pursuant to AB 1881 in 2010. However, as we all know, the city has been in an ongoing drought, and in order to address the state's ongoing drought, changes to AB 1881 have been adopted by the California Water Commission in July 2015 pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order B-29-15. This executive order requires a 25% reduction in potable urban water use by February 2016, replacement of lawn and turf areas with drought-tolerant landscapes, prohibits watering of public streets and medians, as you well can see, brown is the new green in our medians, and then also prohibits irrigation with potable water for new buildings by overhead spray. You know the sprinklers that go around? So what are some of the significant changes to our ordinance? These include a reduction in the applicability of projects that'll be subject to this ordinance. More efficient irrigation systems will be required. There's incentives for gray water use. It also talks about storm water capture, reduction in allowable turf areas, there's mandatory reporting by the city, and we've also included new and updated definitions. And then also, there is a new water-efficient landscape worksheet. What this slide shows is, in 2010, in the middle column, it shows how much square footage of landscape was applicable to the code. The column on the far right now shows the changes. And as you can see, for example, a new residential project, anything over 500 square feet of new landscape is now going to be subject to this ordinance, whereas before, it was only... It was 2,500 square feet. So it captures a lot more projects. With the improvements of irrigation systems over the years, new systems have a much higher efficiency and therefore are now required. Very, very limited overspray is allowed, and depending on the square footage of the landscape area, dedicated water meters specifically for landscaping may be required. As I mentioned before, incentives are provided for gray water, and the use of captured storm water is allowable, provided soils tests are provided. This section is also coordinated with the City's Ordinance 1363, which requires low-impact development standards for storm water management, and that's handled through our Public Works Department when they review plans for development. Additionally, one of the things that this ordinance does is that it states that plans that you utilize have to be categorized as low-water or very-low-water use, and the use of turf in residential projects is reduced from 33% to 25%. However, again, there's an exception to this, and if you use recycled water, you are allowed, you know, more turf and higher... Higher water-use plants. This first go-around, this ordinance, the state is requiring cities and counties to adopt it and have it in effect by November 1st, so our first reporting period this year is November 1st to December 31st. However, in subsequent years, it'll be on a calendar-year basis. During this initial reporting period, the city is going to have to identify the form of the model water-efficient landscape ordinance that we're using and spell out any differences that we have. For us, I want to make this easy, and although our code is set up a little differently than the state law, everything that's in state law is in our code in one section or another. So... I'll go again, okay. In addition, we're also going to have to track all projects, all building permits issued each year, and then we also have to describe the procedure for review of projects and what actions we take related to compliance. One of the things that was also included in this, however, we have given that authority to the water company or the water authority, is education. The city doesn't have... Obviously, we're on water utilities, so we are saying, hey, water companies, you are the ones that need to educate your consumers about water use. So at this time, staff is recommending the Planning Commission open the public hearing and, following the public hearing, adopt Resolution PC15-10 entitled "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park," recommending the City Council amend Chapters 153.160 and 153.220 of the City's Municipal Code and the City's Landscape Design Manual relating to water-efficient landscaping consistent with state law. The location, excuse me, is citywide. The applicant is the City of Baldwin Park, and case number is AZC178. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Do Commissioners want to ask questions of the staff?
I have a small question regarding the conditional use for the whole list that's going to be on there. I know you guys go out and you constantly monitor, you know, different areas of the city and, you know, who's following code in regards to watering and whatnot, you know, in homes?
No.
Not right now?
That would be the water company that would be doing that, yes.
Okay. Because I haven't really seen anybody going out, and it has come to my attention in particularly gated communities and like condo-street communities, although they don't have any gate, that they water a lot, even though on days they're not supposed to. So maybe we can get someone to look into that, too, because I know we're still in a drought. Yeah, it rained today, a little bit in some areas, but that's not going to help us. And we can... I would like more of the people who are in gated communities and condo-like to get... Take a look at, too.
Okay. What I can do is I can pass that information along to the water purveyors. The gated communities and condos, they need to be following the same rules as everybody else.
Okay.
So, but yeah, we will pass that along, definitely.
And if they do have any questions or would like to speak to me, please go ahead and...
Yeah. Lynda Noriega with Valley County Water wanted to be here tonight. Unfortunately, our Planning Commission meeting conflicted with the Three Cs meeting, and I can't remember what the Three Cs stand for, so unfortunately, she couldn't be here tonight, so...
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Amy, you talked about recycle water. Will there... And I know you said that the water company will be, or should, educate the community in regards to how these programs will be working. But define recycle water.
Let me get the definition. It's in here somewhere. I don't recall it off the top of my head.
Because the rainwater, we wouldn't have been in a drought if we were recycling rainwater, if we had the rain. You can give back to me on that.
Okay. I can. I would have to ask the water company, too, how they define it. Well, but yeah, not a problem.
Is recycled water gray water? Is that...
I think it can be used as that. I do know that one of the things that I do is I keep a big bucket in my sink at home, and like, if I rinse stuff off, it goes in there, and then I just throw it out onto the grass. You know? I don't really think that meets the definition of what I think of as recycled, but it could be a water company definition.
Hey, Amy, in the city of Baldwin Park, we have two different water companies. Is that true?
Three different water companies.
I got a person that lives up there by the 605 freeway and 10. That's a different company there. My water bill runs around $70, $60 to $70 a month, or every month, I guess you are. He's telling me his is $250, and he hardly ever waters. Why would there be such a difference between two water companies?
One of them wants to make more money.
(laughing) I understand that. But he was complaining to me, and he's the resident of Baldwin Park.
There's no restrictions. They... Except our water company is restricted by the amount of profit they can make, which is 3%. Other water companies that are privately held, like the San Gabriel, and there's one other little fly-by-nighter that doesn't even have meetings, they can charge what they
That's correct, right? You were in the water commission.[1628.23][1628.23](laughing). He was commissioner for the water company, right? Okay, thank you. That's a good explanation. This is just changing the rules, is all it is, right? Or is the... To be in coram with the state law?
Yes. What this is going to do is by adopting the model water... The segments of the Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance, and when I say segments, I mean we are adopting all the changes. It's not in the form of the state law. We have our own form that we use for our code. All it's going to do is just bring us into compliance with state law.
Anybody else like to speak on these items?
One question I had was, who does the auditing?
That we're still up in the air with. One of the things that we are looking to do is because the Planning Division or city staff really doesn't have the number of employees or the expertise to be able to review these plans and go out and audit, is that we will probably have landscape architects that are licensed as consultants to do the work for us.
And now that the city has relinquished their hold on that money, those consultants will have oodles of money. Thanks to that vote, it went from $10,000 to $120,000 with unrestricted control by the City Council. Thank you, City Council.
If there's anything else, the public likes to speak on it? If I see no other interest, do I hear a motion to Kerry?
I make a motion to Kerry.
I'll second it.
That would be for PC15-10.
PC15-10, correct. Can we take a vote on it again? I will vote yes on it. Valenzuela?
All those in favor.
Yes?
You can take it all at the same time.
Yes. Well, all take it at the same time. Been approved 5 to 0, then, motion carries. Is there any other comments from the Commissioners or the staff? Open communications, like to speak on? If there's no other questions or either side, we'd like to call for adjournment. Do we have staff reports?
Reports of officers.
Oh, reports of all staff.
Thank you, Chair. We don't have any reports of officers for you, but if I may, I'm going to go into Commission and Staff Communications. The first one is a verbal update on the Vineland Residential Care Facility, and we're getting there. It's... We're still kind of going back and forth, but it is moving forward, albeit a little bit slowly. Number five, a verbal update on the proposed Irwindales Materials Recovery Facility and Transfer Station. I don't have any update. I don't have any... I haven't received any... I'm not getting any feedback from the city of Irwindale on that one. Number six is the verbal update on the proposed resumption of mining and subsequent reclamation of the olive pit. As far as I am aware, the litigation is still going back and forth with that one as well. So that is all I have.
Is there anything else anybody wants to speak to the staff about? Do I hear for adjourn the meeting? Do I hear for a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
He's adjourned.